Good evening, everyone, and we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone watching on ITV and via livestream and call the September 26, 2023 regular meeting to order with all board members present or close to being present. Except for Trustee Lavender Williams, who is absent, and I think Trustee Pedersen will be here momentarily. The San Diego High School JROTC Color Guard will now present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors. Trustee Cotoriano, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. I would like to make a motion to adopt today's agenda with item F6, Resolution Recognizing October 2023 as LGBTQIA History Month to be heard next. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Pedersen, second by Trustee Cotoriano. And let's, we'll go ahead and vote, starting with Trustee Cotoriano.
Aye.
And all others. Thank you, all others vote electronically. Thank you. Motion passes unanimously with student board member concurring.
Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in a dialogue with members of the audience. Board Bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda public comment. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. If you would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you, Ms. Stoltz. We will now consider Board Consent Agenda Item F6, Resolution in the Matter of Recognizing October 2023 as LGBTQIA History Month. Superintendent Jackson, please present the item.
Thank you, President Basile, Vice President Hazen, and all trustees. Today, we have before you, for your consideration, a resolution declaring October as LGBTQIA History Month. And I want to take this time right now to talk to our students. To all of our students, I want to tell you that I hear you, that I see you, and I want to take this moment to say to you as your superintendent, I bring a steadfast commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment for you, for our staff members, and we will maintain safe spaces for each and every one of you and each and one of our staff members so that you know you belong, that you know you are seen, and that you know we hear you. I am disheartened by the unfortunate surge of violence, the hate, the bullying in various parts of our nation. Our values of equity, belonging, and thriving is the cornerstone to what we will guarantee you each and every day. That is our commitment. These values blanket each and every one of you regardless of who you are and how you choose to love, because we are about love. I want you to remember this: We believe in the power of education. We are committed to education. We value empathy. We are committed to solidarity. We will continue to work tirelessly, all of the staff members here and all of the staff members who are not here. We will continue to work tirelessly to ensure that all of our schools remain safe, inclusive, and spaces where you can learn, where you can grow, and you can express yourself freely the way you want to express yourself. I want you to know that we are all here to support you. Again, we see you, we hear you. We have a department that is committed to making sure that your needs are met, so please make sure you reach out to us, our Equity and Belonging Department. Reach out to the LGBTQIA+ Education and Advocacy Team, because we want your voices to be heard, and we are all here to support you. It is with that commitment, I am truly honored to be your superintendent, and I am only who I am because of all of you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. And can I get a motion on item F6? Motion by Trustee Barrera, and we have a second by Trustee Cotoriano. Okay, I know that we have some speakers on item F6. Right now, it looks like we have six speakers on item F6, and we'll get two minutes each, and we are going to start with Marnie Von Wilbert, who's one of our City Council members.
Bam, got it. Hello, everyone. It is so nice to be here today. My name is Marnie Von Wilbert. I am one of our San Diego City Council members. I represent District 5, which is Scripps Ranch, Ranch Bernardo, Coral Mountain, Penasquitos. I am a very proud graduate of Scripps Ranch High School, 2001. Go Falcons! And I'm honored to be here with all of you today in support of this item, declaring today LGBTQIA History Month for San Diego Unified. You know, we had an incident at one of our San Diego City libraries a few weeks ago, which two library patrons came to the library, saw the Pride display, took all the books in attempt to, quote, "hide the pride," and emailed me and the city librarian and said, "We will not return these books until you take this down." Well, I decided to send that email to the newspaper. And guess what? Not only did we raise enough money to restock all the Pride display books at Penasquitos Library, the community in San Diego came out and we raised $32,000, and we're going to now have Pride displays at all 36 library branches next year. So know that your community supports you. We support LGBTQ history. We support the students here. Thank you so much, Superintendent Jackson, for your wonderful remarks. We at City Hall Government see you, too. We're proud of you. You are the next generation, and I'm proud to support this item. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Councilmember Von Wilbert. We really appreciate your support. Next is Rob Shaughnessy.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to speak with you. Can you hear me now? Thank you. It's a pleasure to speak to you. My name is Robert Shaughnessy. I'm a parent of a senior at UC High School, who was one of the speakers outside at the rally that we had before this meeting. He's much more eloquent than I am, but I speak as a parent in favor of the resolution that's before you to make this LGBTQIA History Month. It's important to show a positive attitude. It's important for you, as a board, to react positively and in the face of all the negativity that we're seeing from other school districts, not just in other states, but here in Southern California. It's disturbing. As a parent, I want my child to be in a school that's a safe environment, and I think this kind of a resolution will foster that education that will make our schools a safer place. So my ask today is to please pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. And next is Dennis Nicely. And as Dennis is coming down, I'd also like to ask Jen LaBarbera and Pam, there's no last name, and then Heather Russell, just to be towards the front of the auditorium so you can go after him.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dennis Nicely, and my pronouns are he/him/his. I'm a resident of the district and also co-chair of Glisten San Diego, an organization that supports LGBTQIA+ students and educators. I would like to speak today in favor of Agenda Item F6, which would recognize October of each year as LGBTQIA+ History Month. San Diego Unified School District has done so much to support all youth, including LGBTQIA+ students, beginning with meeting members of the LGBTQIA+ community at least nine years ago in an effort to identify those areas where San Diego Unified School District could improve services for their LGBTQIA+ students and staff. The recognition of LGBTQIA+ History Month would continue to demonstrate to the students, staff, and parents the district's commitment to inclusivity and belonging for marginalized groups in this school community. Please continue demonstrating your support by approving the proposed policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. And next, we have Jen LaBarbera.
Hello. My name is Jen LaBarbara. My pronouns are they and them, and I'm the Director of Education and Advocacy at San Diego Pride. And I just want to thank you for continuing to be a leader in San Diego County. The attack that we're seeing across the country on education and an informed public is an attack on our democracy as a whole. And as we see districts around our county, around Southern California, around this whole country, take stances that explicitly exclude and endanger our LGBTQIA+ students and staff. As we see people hide their bigotry behind claims of parental rights and protecting children, I cannot tell you how grateful I am to be at a school board meeting for something good for a change. You all are taking a really important step to recognize the impact of the LGBTQIA+ community, to recognize the importance of true diversity, inclusivity, and belonging within our classrooms and within our school sites. This History Month and the teaching of our LGBTQIA+ history tells us that we belong, that we are here, that we have always been here, and that we will always be here. So thank you again for being a leader and for standing up and for voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And next, we have Pam.
Pam. All right. Well, I probably am not going to be your favorite person, but here we go. If "leave the kids alone" sounds like hate to you, then you are from whom they need protection. The children in this district do not belong to you, and with the egregious bill signed into law recently by Governor Newsom, all children will need ongoing protection, all children. The state wants schools to enter into gender support plans and transition children at school. Parents, the secret forms are located on the San Diego Unified School District website on the homepage under A through Z index. Social transition is the first step in a larger medical protocol. Social transitioning is a profound psychosocial intervention. If teachers or other school employees are socially transitioning children at school without parental consent, they are practicing medicine without a license. Parents need to know, parents need to give consent. Gender-affirming care is not evidence-based. It is an experimental, ideologically motivated pseudoscience, I'm speaking. It is not gender-affirming care. It is child mutilation and sterilization for profit. It is not drag queen story hour. It is a children's strip show. It is not inclusion. It is porn in schools. This is a social epidemic and the largest child abuse scandal ever seen in America. Parents are presumed under the law to have their child's best interests at heart. There is no data to support the inflammatory default position. We hear that parents are dangerous or will act abusively to a trans-identifying child. If a child is exhibiting gender dysphoria or indicating suicide tendencies on campus, their parents must know to provide support and get professional help. The parents must know when their child is at high risk. There's no state or federal law that permits or requires schools to lie to parents about their children. Schools do not possess greater rights to our children. Parents, pay attention. Talk to your children. Go to the schools. Look at the books, the paperwork your child brings home. Protect the children.
Okay, next, we have Heather Russell. Two minutes, please.
Okay. It's hard to follow something like that with a lot of hatred when we're all here to show support, but my experience is different than a lot of yours. My name is Heather Russell. I am an ally. I 100% support the district supporting the LGBTQIA+ community, but I do question your authenticity. I do not understand a district that says they support LGBTQIA+ community yet also refuses reimbursement for LGBTQIA books. Your refusal to reimburse funds per settlement for books on LGBTQIA African-American Studies in light of all the recent antisemitism in San Diego, refusing books on Jewish history and disabilities, makes your support seem insincere. You may smile and pat yourselves on the back today, but the community should be aware that in the same breath you are supportive, you're also limiting LGBTQIA education, and you're alienating allies. You don't have to be the district, the superintendent, or the board, who's known for limiting these books to some children. There are more important things than wanting to be right. It's doing the right thing. It's shameful, and you can do better.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will, thank you to all of our speakers this evening, and now we are going to turn it over to trustees to ask questions, or we should discuss this item. I would like to start. Trustee Cotoriano.
I mean, y'all have already heard me speak, but I'm not going to say anything, I'm not going to repeat anything. We recognize the importance of this. Let's get this resolution passed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Trustee Barrera.
Yeah, just very quickly. First of all, thank you to Trustee Cotoriano for your leadership, and thank you for all of our students who were here today, including some of the most powerful speakers that any of us have heard in a long time. We were honored to be able to listen to you today. And as several of us talked about, what you're doing, your leadership, is not only important for students in this district, but it's important for students throughout San Diego County, throughout California, throughout this country. Clay, you talked about your hesitancy about saying the Pledge of Allegiance, and I respect that, but I think what we all need to recognize is that this country is never a static entity. What America is depends on what we make it. And you today are making not only this district, but this country, a better place. Certainly makes me more proud to be an American. Thank you for your leadership.
Anyone else? Trustee Cotoriano.
Really quickly, I'd just like to thank all of the wonderful staff that put this giant event together. Couldn't have done it without them, so thank you.
Yeah, so I'm going to finish by also thanking our students, as Trustee Barrera said, some amazing comments and speeches, and we're very thankful to you for being here. Trustee Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Marnie Von Wilbert for joining us, and also Assemblymember Chris Ward, who was here earlier and had to leave. And I also wanted to recognize Ebony Weathers and Maria Shembry from the Equity and Belonging. They are amazing and do incredible work, and I'm just honored to be able to cosponsor the resolution with Matthew this evening. And as all of you have already heard, I'm confident that this board will always support all of our students. And to students and board members, including those from our neighboring districts, I've had some discussions with that aren't in that situation, unfortunately. They're struggling, and they're feeling alone in this fight, so I'm here to say that you are not alone, and you are doing the right thing by choosing love and acceptance versus bigotry and hate that we're seeing. This is not only true for our board, but for all boards across this county and beyond, that they need to be supporting our students. So we come together this evening to show what it looks like to love and accept our students and provide a safe learning environment that's free from any doctrine of narrow-minded thinking and hate speech. So I'm just going to read the last part. Yes. I'm going to read the last part of our resolution that provides the opportunity this evening to restate our ongoing commitment to and celebration of the district's intersectional diversity that promotes safe, inclusive, and affirming school spaces for our students, families, and educators. Thank you. All right, so with that, let's go ahead and vote. Trustee Cotoriano.
Aye.
Aye, everyone else? Okay, that passes unanimously with our board members concurring. Thank you again, everyone. Okay, moving on. Deputy General Counsel Searls, are there any reportable actions from our today's closed session?
There are not.
There are not? Okay, thank you. Superintendent Jackson, do we have any administrative assignments to report?
We do. Thank you, President Basile. This evening, we are appointing the Director of Early Childhood Education, Santos Gonzalez. Congratulations. Look forward to your leadership. That is it. Thank you, President Basile.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like our ASB students, Reyna Castro Flores from Hoover High School and Andrina Ortiz from Madison High School, to introduce themselves and tell us about yourselves and your schools, what's going on both on the academic front and the fun social side as well. Who wants to start first? Do we have a preference? Okay, we'll start over here with Reyna.
Good afternoon. My name is Reyna Flores. I'm a senior and ASB president at Hoover High School. Today, I will be sharing and highlighting some great things happening at our school. First, Hoover is a designated community school, which means through the California Community Schools partnership, we are committed to transform educational outcomes for our most vulnerable students through establishing whole child, whole family, and whole community connections at our school site. Our ASB supports these initiatives by having students come in and help with our food pantry, our milk rescue, aka "no leche left behind," the Cardinal Closet, and more. Our ASB secretary and our ASB director serve on the Subcommittee for Community Schools. Hoover Community Schools this year are focusing on mental health, spirit, and engagement, attendance, and school safety initiatives. As part of spirit and engagement, ASB has a brand-new Code Red Student Section for our football and basketball home games. We've also been excited to support our newest sports, girls' flag football. Along with a new student section, ASB hosted a club fair, which gave students the chance to get more involved and get to know more of what's happening on campus. We had a total of 40 clubs, community partners, and sports come out. ASB just wrapped up leading and participating in class assemblies, which involved our students modeling dress code and code of conduct. We believe having students present these skits will have more of an impact than just having admin go over rules. We wanted our peers to see other students up there and model what it's like to have importance and involvement. However, not only does Hoover take pride in the way students are involved, but we also take pride in the way teachers and staff members show their cardinal pride. Speaking of cardinal pride, we want to shout out our support from our Hoover Alumni Foundation as we continue to find ways to partner and create lifelong bonds, and we're excited to welcome them back this year for our homecoming. As you know, homecoming is a big part of bringing the classes, academies, and clubs together. Our homecoming theme this year is Hoco Fest. We're looking forward to all the festivities. Continuing to create a positive climate at Hoover is very important. We strive to make everyone feel welcomed and like they have a safe place. We set up lunchtime activities daily, including soccer goals and volleyball nets, giant lawn games, and tabletop games. Our ASB cabinet and our ASB director can usually be found outside every day walking around campus at lunch, blowing bubbles, and curating the perfect playlist for music every day. We even go around doing simple things like giving compliments around campus. We're actually in the middle of our first School Spirit Week. Today was Tropical Tuesday. It was fun to see everyone in their lays and their, obviously, school-appropriate attire. Tomorrow is Suicide Prevention Awareness Day, where we'll be wearing purple or teal, and it's also our Back to School Night and College Fair. Thursday is our Generations Day, and Friday is our Neon Night. Next, I want to take a moment to briefly share some highlights over what our academies and programs have been up to since the last time we were presenting here. Hoover High School is known for the five academies that are inside of the school: The Academy of Health and Healthier Communities, the Sustainable Academy of Building and Engineering, the Academy of, I'm sorry, Information and Technology, and the Academy of Literature and Media Arts. All of our academies have been getting recognized for all of their accomplishments. The Health Academy was recognized for their program called Faces for the Future. They received their second annual Stock Market Award, and they volunteered to help us with our community schools' food pantry. The Academy of Information and Technology was recognized and awarded for their podcast, and they won an NPR award. The Academy of Literature and Media Arts, the Cardinals' New, which is our newest publication, won a Journalism Award at the SD County Fair this summer. SJ won the Ally of the Year Award to support the work of Mercedi Can, and the Sustainable Academy of Building and Engineering represented Hoover at the CCTE showcase, where they were able to display their guitars that they were able to make with their partnership with Taylor Guitars. Bringing me to the next topic for the next school year in a row, our ASB, through our event marketing class, partners to provide event support and hospitality at the CTE showcase. We're looking forward to our third year. I also want to recognize our JROTC program. Post-pandemic, Hoover JROTC has elevated to the top tier of JROTC programs in Southern California, currently ranked third of 14 schools in the San Diego Unified School District. Last year achieved the Gold Star only earned by top 10% of JROTC units across the nation. Arm drill team, unarmed drill team, color guard, and archery team have all competed at national competition in the last two years and finished in top three with over 25 schools competing. We are recognized a top 10 Army JROTC program on the West. We also have a mariachi class that performed for Mexico's Independence Day at lunch. In closing, I would like to say I'm very honored and thankful I'm being able to talk about how amazing a campus Hoover is and how great of a community we've become. Thank you, and hu ride.
That was fantastic. Thank you. That was a very comprehensive report, but it was great. I mean, you provided a lot of really good detail. And now, we'll move over and hear about what's going on at Madison.
Hello, everyone. My name is Andrina Ortiz. I am the president at Madison High School, where I spend most of my time either in classrooms, attending club meetings, or on the field. You can catch me managing boys' baseball during the spring and boys' soccer during the winter. ASB expanded this year from one class to two class periods this year with around 70 students. I am so honored to be able to talk to you about what Madison has in the upcoming week. Tomorrow's our Club Raffle will be sharing all kinds of amazing clubs Madison has to offer, such as Key Club, First Generation Scholars, Equality, and some new ones we recently added. We started two new cultural clubs, Black Girls United and We started two new cultural clubs, Black Girls United and Asian American Alliance, along with many student interest clubs, with Cooking Club being the most anticipated. This Friday is our Staff Appreciation Night against Lincoln High School, where we are expecting a good game. October 3rd is our Blood Drive. October 12th is Picture Yourself at Madison, where we bring in eighth-grade students. We're bringing eighth-grade students to learn about the career pathway programs we have to offer. We will show our newsroom, which is a life-like newsroom, used by our broadcast, and our real-life auto shop used by our automotive program. October 3rd is our Alarm Clock Pet Rally against Cathedral, where we will be focusing on breast cancer awareness. We like to have fun at Madison, but you know, academics always come first. This year, we were offered to have Mesa College courses available not only for seniors, but juniors as well. I'm proud to share that 45% of our ninth to eleventh graders last year were awarded being honor roll students, which indicates they have above a 3.5 GPA. Madison is known for showing what the NEST is really about: noble, excellent, supportive, and thoughtful, something you'll definitely seek once you enter our campus. Again, my name is Andrina Ortiz, and thank you so much for this time.
Thank you as well, both fantastic reports. So we thank both Reyna and Andrina for joining us this evening. Okay, moving on to item D4, Superintendent Jackson, please provide your information report.
Well, I have good news. No report from me this evening.
Okay.
I provided my report earlier.
That's true, he did a fantastic report. We will now hear item E1, which is the report on Universal Transitional Kindergarten, also known as UTK, through grade eight summer programs, including Academic Extended School Year, ESY, five-week session, summer primetime, and Level Up enrichment opportunities. Superintendent Jackson, please introduce the item.
Thank you, President Baso. Trustees, this evening, I'd like to welcome Toby Pace, our Senior Director of Extended Learning Opportunities, up to present this item. And this evening, she will provide an overview of our Expanded Learning Opportunities programs and their impacts on our students. She'll be covering some data, along with academic, social, emotional learning. Thank you, Toby.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson, thank you, board, and I'm just so excited to be here with you tonight to share the work over the nine weeks of summer 2023. I just appreciate this opportunity because I know it's so important to our students outside of the regular school day. So I feel honored that I'm in my second year in this role, and I've really learned a lot. So this is my first official summer, and I'm excited to share that with you. Do I have a clicker, or do I just? Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, all right. Sorry about that. Awesome, yay! All right, so really, just want to hone in on the outcomes for this evening and sharing this report. We are going to lean into the enrollment overview, specifically the academic data and our growth mindset and engagement data for our summer programs, most importantly, to inform what we do moving forward. We are 100% funded, and as you noticed, we're sharing specifically about UTK VIII. We do run summer programs, and we partner all the way from infant toddler, all the way up to trace in high school, and I partner with the Office of Graduation and multiple offices. But for tonight's purpose, I really want to lean into the UTK VIII summer experience for all of our San Diego Unified students, and how we design programs to really engage them and foster that learning. One important thing to note is that we recently received the ELOP budget reduction of approximately $5 million. So that's why it's really important to look line by line through our experiences and find out what we're doing right, and how can we maximize that funding? Because ultimately, we're here for the kids, and we want to give them an opportunity to thrive socially, emotionally, and academically outside of school. So over the past year, in my department, we spent some time really leaning into a vision statement for ELO, and I want to offer this up as we co-created this with our primetime department, we incorporated middle school sports, summer offers of grad, and we really co-created this to say that we want to offer an academically enriching programs which provide safe, inclusive, and joy-filled opportunities for our Priority One students. And I want to pause on Priority One. I know I've shared this with you before, but it is specifically those unduplicated students, our homeless, our foster youth, our multilingual students, as well as our students with disabilities, with IEPs. So we've decided, as a district, to support these students, and how do we help them grow socially, emotionally, inside and outside the school day, which we know we offer nine hours a day through our various programs at primetime during the school year? And also specifically tonight, we're honing in on those summer programs. So the three pictures below here are three program offerings that were offered throughout this summer. I'm gonna start with Academic ESY. That is our full, inclusive, five-week program, taught by our amazing SDA teachers and our paras, and supporting our students in a five-hour, five-day-a-week program to learn academics in reading, writing, speaking, listening, and mostly that social-emotional connection. The next program we offered over this summer was called our Summer Primetime. We also offered Level Up, and as we know, that's a partnership with our amazing San Diego Foundation. We partnered with over 80 different community business organizations to provide opportunities for these Priority One students and all students to have opportunities that they would have never had before. So with that, we're leaning into the enrollment data. And on here, these are the three programs divided by, we want to look specifically at enrollment. So the first two columns show the growth of Academic Program 2022 to 2023, and I want to highlight, everything in blue is our specific Priority One students that followed under those guidelines. So you can see specifically, we had 7,900, I'm sorry, 196 students. Last year, this summer, we were able to, again, provide an increase to 11,511 students for Academic/ESY programs. And I say slash ESY because our students are fully included in the general ed environment, and all students are general ed students first. And in the middle two columns, I want to highlight our primetime summer programs. We had our summer programs, we served over about 5,000 students total, we increased again that this summer, 3,125 of those were our Priority One students. And then in our last column, that was offered throughout the nine weeks of summer, is our Level Up. I do want to point out that our Level Up enrollment went down, so you'll see that last summer, if we just look in the blue, our Priority One students, we had 7,093 UTK VIII, again, this is not the high school students, that we reduced, and it lowered to 5,157. However, our actual, we call it our contact hours, increased. So those 5,157 students didn't just get to do a one-hour program in ukulele or something like that, they had a full nine-hour-a-day program. So it's important to notice that that was a total of a million contact hours. We pulled our data from our Level Up, and over the summer, we had our San Diego Unified students in a million hours of opportunities in partnership with Level Up. And the big number we're looking at below, our goal was to hit 15,000 Priority One UTK VIII students enrolled in one or more, so that's why those numbers don't add up. We had some students enrolled in both, because we know that they were enrolled in Academic and some were in Level Up, but we had a total of 15,000 P1 students enrolled in one or more summer program. So that's really our baseline for this year. Our goal, on the next slide here, is to increase that by 10%. We want to increase, and just to give you a number, we actually have 45,000 district UTK VIII students in that definition of Priority One students. So 45 minus the 15, there's still 30,000 students that we want to reach. And so with that, we want to set a measurable goal. Obviously, I want to reach all 45,000, but we want to be really strategic in looking at this goal and increasing it by at least, and we want to set this as a 10% increase, to increase that. More importantly, with the enrollment, though, we wanted to specifically gather why. Why are there 30,000 kids that didn't participate in one or more UTK VIII students that could have had this? So we did multiple things to gather this information. We surveyed all 30,000 that didn't participate for parent surveys. We received feedback that the top three barriers why they didn't enroll were because of A, hard to navigate the enrollment process. If you experience summer, there are four different ways to enroll a child in any of our summer programs. B, access. We went for making everything equal, which we know equal isn't equitable. We actually had schools in certain sites that didn't have enough space, and so we didn't have walking distance to our Priority One students. And C was really giving that advertisement, working partnership with our communications, to tell them sooner. It was, we know, as a mom myself, I know I'm always looking, what are my children gonna do as a full-time working mom? What are they gonna do in the summer? We can't wait until March and April anymore. We need to advertise this earlier. So we have these action steps based on this that we're currently working on, and it's really important that we work towards one system of enrollment, where I heard last board meeting that we're working on using the parent portal as a mechanism to gather LCFF data. That's our hope and desire. We've been working with Ron Rhodey, Torrin Allen. How do we create that in one system so that families can have the full choice? We also know that it's important to have that earlier program identification and communication, frequent and in multiple ways, not just through a text, not just through an email. We want to get out there, we want to figure out what can we do over, you know, the weekends? How can we get into our schools to share this? And we also have put together a list by school site and by learning community of how many Priority One students exist in all of the different learning communities, and we're opening up sites in those specific areas. And lastly, continue to communicate and advertise to ignite that interest. So those, right now, are action steps for enrollment. I'm gonna dive into the data, which I am a data nerd, and I love really looking at what we did this first summer that I was involved in this, is it working? And that's always the question I want to ask, are we maximizing our funding? So I'm gonna share academic data in three main areas. We're gonna talk about writing, reading, math, and then, not in academic, but we're gonna talk about SEL. So this first slide here is on the Writing Summitive Test. Many of you are familiar, but writing exams or tests are given to our students throughout the year, and usually they're done on a four-point rubric. So you can see that this is zero up to 2.5. A 1, I wrote this down so we're really specific on this, shows that a child has not met grade level expectation. A 2 is that a student has partially met grade level expectation. A 3 is where we want all of our students, that they have met grade level expectations, and this specific assessment was done on a narrative. Obviously, there are different expectations for grades one versus grades eight, but we use this as a measure. So every child, these are same children, tested the first week and then the fifth week with a pre and post, and we built in time for teachers to come together and to calibrate that writing assessment and show growth. So if you see specifically here for our grades one and two, there was a 22% growth for our primary students in grade one and two. In grades three and five through five, we had a 22% growth. And then in grades six through eight, we had a little bit less growth for our middle schoolers. That is a side note, that I'm actually putting together an interest survey with our middle school principals and our new middle school area superintendent to really rethink middle school for summer. I have a middle school son myself, and I know it wasn't his favorite thing to go to summer school, so how do we engage our middle schoolers to really lean into that? So overall, we showed increased average of growth for grades one through eight at an 18% average. Our goal is to increase that reading, I'm sorry, that writing to 20% for summer 2024. So that's our outcome for writing. We're gonna jump into our baseline outcomes. So this is the first summer that we have given the FAST academic assessment in both A reading and A math. So again, this is a baseline, so we didn't have a goal from the previous year, nothing to compare it to, so that's why it's a baseline outcome. And we want to highlight that students were given K through eight, the first week, they were given the A reading test, and the last week. And with that, we saw a 2.9 growth. And I want to mention that the FAST reading assessment is calibrated with SPAC scores, so we were able to kind of correlate that. Same goes with our math. We were able to see that first week to the last week, a 5% growth in K through eight. Now, what does that mean? I can't say that's good growth, that's bad growth, that is growth, which is great for 22 days of instruction. However, the real data is to pull our FAST fall scores. We want to see all the kids, at the end of, I think it's October, I'll be able to pull that score, and say, if you did it 10 summer school versus you didn't, how are you now? And did you experience that summer slide going back? So really, in order to create a growth goal for next summer, I really want to look at that specific data in October with my amazing team and analyze that to make a measurable, appropriate goal as we move forward. Lastly, our most important thing in our vision about having the summer experience for all of our kids, we wanted to look closely into the growth mindset and the engagement. We used the Panorama SEL test, and if you're familiar with that, that's from the California State, the Panorama, and we measured, we did a pre and post, same as the other assessments, the first week and last week, and asked our students, grades three through eight, and we asked them the same specific question, we said, what is the average of change, the possibility of change in six areas? So one was being talented, two was doing well in subjects, three, level of intelligence, four, effort, five, behaving well in class, and six, easily giving up. So we saw slight growth in our third through fifth, and we, in sixth through eight, we had a 1.2 growth. To me, when I looked at this, I said, this is something we need to lean into and really look at maybe a different assessment to gather more concrete data, because it didn't show as much growth as we wanted. So we're gonna lean into that, however, we are excited about the work. And lastly, I just want to share, all of this comes together for the why, and we always talk about our why, is the voice of our students, our parents, and our staff. Our amazing communications put together a video with this all engaged, we did put it into Board Docs at Your Leisure, please take a check out of that from the Mackey Productions. But we heard from an elementary student at Barnard saying, it's fun being able to express myself, learning guitars and ukuleles. We had a Pacific Beach Elementary parent saying, we value this opportunity to forward, we look forward to next summer, what are we gonna do next? And then we have our other students, and, oh, I can't see distance, sorry. Our students were excited, and when I taught, this is from one of our teachers, we surveyed all community partners and got their feedback, they're excited to come back just to experience it again next summer, and I would love to teach next summer from Montgomery Middle. And lastly, we have Alana, a K VIII student who participated, and if you've got a chance to see the video, she's amazing, she talks about the activities and how she wants to be an engineer. So with that said, there's a lot of work to be done, it's not just preparing for summer, right, starting in March, it's now, and this is the work that our team has done. So I'm excited to open it up to you and gather feedback and continue to make this the best program for our San Diego Unified Students.
Fantastic, thank you, Toby. And do we have any questions from the trustees? Trustee Pedersen?
Sure, thank you, Toby. First of all, thank you for the presentation, and thank you, this is a massive undertaking. So I guess, you know, sometimes you have grumpy board members that are actually on the board, and then it's like a, but this is our dinner table, this is where, you know, this is where we have the hard conversations, and I think we're all committed to making this thing work. And I think, as you flagged, it's one thing when we have ELOP funds, it's another thing when it's general funds, and it's a much, especially given the cuts we're gonna have, we're all committed to this, but we need to figure out how to improve it if we're gonna be able to justify it. So with that being said, so first of all, I love the way that you flagged that what we really need to see is our FAST June for all students, and we need to compare our FAST October-
Yes.
-to see if we were able to, to a certain degree, reverse or slow the summer slide. And I think, so that's one thing. I would say broadly speaking, I've learned in my life that when there's a data point, a glaring data point missing, it's missing for a reason. And, or when there's a slide missing, it's missing for a reason. And I would say, the slide missing here is our attendance slide. And I would say the slide missing here is our attendance slide. And I say that as a parent who's, who went through this program with my, I didn't go through it. I'm a little older, I aged out of this program. But I had a seven-year-old and a nine-year-old in the program. And I, and this is where I would really love to have a more of a conversation about what the surveys of parents who either chose not to participate or started participating and then decided it wasn't worth driving the kids to go do it, or the kids rebelled, or however that went. And that would be great to see that survey data. And I'm sure your team is digging into it. What I would say, so first of all, it's a concrete question. What's the attendance data look like? And there's a bit of feedback in there on my part, if you'll forgive me, which is, you know, we saw, my guess is what you'll find is the offerings were very good. The curriculum was good, the instruction was good, the level up was fascinating, engaging. I think a lot of it's going to, we're going to find that it fell on us, the central office. In the sense that it's not really responsibility of a principal, a site leader, to pitch a summer program over which they're not like, they're not going to preside. And it's not for the temporary administrator to pitch a program, which they weren't there for this six months prior to pitch it. So it really falls on us as a district to make a very data-rich argument about why it's essential to participate in this. And moving forward, we're going to have to look at this FAST data and develop that pitch and get it out early and hard. Because I heard a lot of conversations with families who were like, well, even families that were enrolled that were like, ah, whatever, we're just going to go, there's a party today. Or we're going to go, and I was of the opinion, being ideologically committed, no, this is very important. And, and so the other thing I saw was we didn't think out the, the logistics side from a family-centered point of view. How is this going to work for, I mean, we're obviously not, we're not an unduplicated family. We're an open enrollment family. And so, and I'm obviously on board with targeting unduplicated families. But for instance, by the time that we came around open enrollment, there was no offerings left in our, in our cluster, which is, which means you saw plummeting level up. Because in our program, and I think this is probably duplicated, your ESY ended at 1:00 P.M. And there's nothing in your cluster, even though there's literally on your school site, there is a level up. And now you've got to go to Claremont, but you can't, you have, there's literally no time in between. It's not even five minutes. It's literally, so you're either going to be late every day, you're going to commute across town to do it, then you're going to have to commute back to pick them up, and you may have a second child. I mean, so what I would say moving forward, and on the flip side, I bet you saw a huge drop in attendance from the families that were forced because there wasn't high-quality content in their area, forced to commute. And at a certain point, like, whoa, I'm not going to keep doing this. This is a half an hour commute to get there. I'm stuck for four hours or two, three hours waiting. I can either go home with another half hour commute back. I mean, so to me, I think a big part of this is we need to have a family-centered perspective on when we design this thing. What is, how are we going to facilitate this? Because if we can't get not just the attendance up, but if we can't get the, not just the enrollment, if we can't get the attendance up, we're not going to fund this. Just as a board, I can tell, I mean, well, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but we're going to have to justify it with very high attendance and very high enrollment numbers to justify the general fund expenditure. So I'm, I'm committed to this. I am a believer in summer enrichment and I, and I look forward to supporting you any way I can to get the enrollment up, the attendance up, and to help with that family-centered perspective on how you facilitate it for, for families. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Sorry, trustee Whitehurst Payne?
You raised the elephant in the room, which is the funding. Can somebody talk about that, where we are with that? I'll repeat it. That's the one thing that all of these 80 folks you talked about and others who want to come in and do projects with us, they keep asking, is the money going to be there next year? So just give them a little fumble of what we face and where we are with that. So I don't have to repeat it to them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Hazen?
If you want me to tell the community that we are facing a $220 million deficit and we're going to have to make decisions, I'm happy to do so. I just did.
So appreciate all the work that went into creating these experiences for more than 15,000 students, I think. And this is a technical item, but I think as we continue to get more and more focused on goals and outcomes, I would ask that as we get presentations, we know, what were we aiming for and how did we do against that? I know you spoke to, the goal was 15,000 students. We had 15,084. To make it explicit in the presentation would be super helpful. So great to hear they were there. I appreciate trustee Pedersen's question around attendance. And my hope is there's some analysis that's done. I know earlier today, actually trustee Barrera and I were talking about achievement and is there a correlation between, you know, attendance and what do we see? And so would love to be able to see of those 5% of students who became proficient in math, for example, did we see higher levels of attendance there? And what is that connection? So I think diving a little deeper so we know the impact that makes. And I am really interested in what we're thinking with regard to this $5 million cut. We're expecting $5 million less to do more. Right? We heard this year, we served 15,000, we, our goal was 15,000 students. We want to be at 16,500. And so the question for me is, can we afford to continue funding summer programs for non-priority one students? I think those are some of the questions we have to ask ourselves. And I appreciate trustee Pedersen's question. And it doesn't seem like we necessarily have the dollars available to be all things to all people and that we do have to prioritize and identify where needs exist and where our dollars can go furthest. And so looking forward to hearing more, Toby, from you and your team about your recommendations with that, in that regard. I think you spoke about there are 45,000 priority one students, 30,000 who didn't participate. But what I'm hearing is we may not have the funding to support 45,000 priority one students. And so these are tough conversations to have, but I think things that we need to be thinking really strategically about as we head into the next year.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Trustee Whitehurst Payne?
Yes, I really, I wasn't being flippant earlier about that. Because contextually, and he will not take any credit for this, but my colleague here, Richard Barrera, really did a lot of lobbying and worked for us to get this money. This money is unprecedented. We've never had money like this to make our students whole, if you will, in the sense that we provide opportunities beyond just the regular school activities so that we can enrich them, we can provide them with the opportunities that will enhance their lives and they can become citizens with a plethora of experiences. And so it is a credit to staff and San Diego Foundation that we actually had these, the opportunity to put forth programs like this and to serve. Can you imagine it? We had not lobbied for this money. We would not have, we'd have zero and it wouldn't be a topic of discussion. But according to your report, 15,000 students have been served. And I think Gina's point is well-taken, that we need to look at whether or not we accomplished what we wanted to do, what, what the purpose was and why we actually had the program. And I think that's what you were attempting to present to us today. And with a deeper level of research and evaluation, we can decide which programs, I mean, like using regression, regression analysis or something, we can find out which programs were worth it, which weren't, and determine what's the best path going forward so that we can, we can meet that goal, whatever that amorphous goal is, and serve students at the best rate that we can. Because in my mind's eye, coming from an area where we've, we have students who never had some of the experiences and the opportunities that our students were provided over these past summers, I really am very excited about it because this is a dream. This is what we wanted to see our students experience. It's unconscionable that we'd have students here in San Diego with 70 miles of beaches and they've never been to the beach. They don't know what the beach is about. I mean, that to me is just unconscionable. We can get, put the book down, take the students to the water. They don't have to read about what a beach is. They can experience what a beach is. And this program provided that opportunity for some of our students to do that. That's just one sample. So as we go forward, we'll look at all these, hopefully, we will look at all the experiences that our, our students were provided and see how we can maximize the opportunities so that our students are not just only reading books, but they're living the experiences here in San Diego. Thank you.
Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, just picking up a little bit from trustee Whitehurst Payne. So we talk about a summer of learning and joy. So we've got some academic metrics that we're using, but it would be great to have some joy metrics, you know, some social, emotional metrics that aren't surveys, that are actual, you know, assessments of, you know, where our students are socially and emotionally. And again, I like the comparing the students who participated in the summer programs versus similar students who, who didn't. I think that's, you know, that's a valid way of looking at it. And I appreciate trustee Pedersen's point that if that data is strong, both on the academic and the social, emotional side, that's the best ammunition that we have, you know, to, to, you know, push for sustaining and increasing, you know, the funding for extended learning. Because I know, I know that that's the first question that I think a lot of legislators have. It's what's been the impact, you know, of the extended learning funding? And so I think we have answers, you know, to that question. And, and we're going to get better and better at having answers to that question as you're, you're laying out. So I appreciate that. Are we going to receive a similar report on what we did with our high school students that were not funded through ELOP but funded through our general fund? Because we had a lot of high school students doing summer and, yeah, yeah.
I'm happy to partner with Office of Graduation. I know that that was shared a little bit in the summer about the summer commencement, as well as the credit acceleration and recovery. And there's a lot of data. I just didn't want to go for an hour.
Which is great.
But I'm happy to partner with my colleagues in the Office of Grad because there's a lot of amazing things that took place over the summer in our Teach Lead partnership. And I just wanted to limit it to sharing these output items tonight.
So I think that would be great in a future presentation because that's a whole other part of the summer picture.
It's huge.
And, and I know that this was something that, you know, was particularly your responsibility, you know, for, for overseeing. So that would be great. The, I'm, I'm also very interested in your point about, and I think this goes to, you know, how, how do we increase the number of priority one students who are involved? And your point about access, and I think trustee Pedersen was making this point as well. So I know that there's a lot that goes into determining which schools are sites for both summer and level up. But it seems like, you know, to the extent that we can offer options that are within walking distance, you know, of most of our priority one students. So I don't know what your thoughts are about that.
100%. And we're currently gathering input from all community partners, from facilities and planning, which is whole-site modernization. We're actually looking specifically about priority students in closest location. And I think to the point of this is not, we need to own, these are our kids. And so we're really, I've worked with the area soup saying, hey, I'm going to be asking input from the area and we need to view them as our students, not, oh, it's not summer school, they're not mine. But really shifting a mindset, but also providing access, A, physical location. And then if that barrier's not there, how do I work with transportation? So we had a full meeting, actually last week, a three-hour meeting with our transportation department to look at opportunities because they're only 10-month employees, but shuttling. And how can we consider that now to provide access for the two high schools that are going to be completely closed, Miramesa and I believe Hoover? How are we going to still serve those kids this summer? So that is coming to the board, hopefully in November. I need to first meet with the DAC, but I'm working on that. And that is our number one goal is, that's why we wanted to address these as barriers and remove them to provide access.
Trustee Hazen?
I'm so glad you mentioned that because I think there seems to be a disconnect. Because during the school year, we say, for many students, we're going to make sure that you have a great experience and care from six to six. But somehow in the summer, we think those same students and same families have different needs and they don't. So I really appreciate you thinking about that entire school day and into the evening to make sure that we are providing something enriching during all of those hours. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Trustee Katorianna?
Thank you. And first, thank you for such an amazing presentation. I'm still kind of stuck on the FAST assessment data. The board has talked quite a lot about the specific numbers. But, you know, when I see these numbers, 2.9%, 1.2%, 0.3%, my mind without, when I'm not given context or what metrics to compare to, the first number I think of is, that's basically zero. And so, and pretty clearly, these are not zero. And when I look at this presentation, I wonder, you know, 2.9%, that seems small, but we know the summer slide exists. What, what are we comparing it to? Is it normally that it decreases by 5%? In that case, this is a huge win, right? And so that data, I think, is, is really important. And what Richard said about social, emotional learning, I think it's incredibly important to have that data here as well because it's just as important. And I know personally how hard it is to quantify that social, emotional learning into numbers. I mean, like, I, I went through these programs that even I don't know how I was changed by these programs. But there, that shouldn't allow us to hide behind not having that data because this, this really is important. And, you know, when I look at this growth mindset data, I think first, 0.3%, is that a lot? Is that really it? But the other part is, well, this is a survey. So what other metrics are there? And also, from what I'm seeing is that these students already show quite a large proficiency with growth mindset, right? So the, the very lowest ticker on here is 3.3 out of 4. And so just, just thinking about like, how can we really measure that in an authentic way?
100% agree. We're looking into that.
All right. And I just wanted to share, thank you so much for all your good work because I know you do a lot of work and a lot of hours behind the scenes to, to make these programs fantastic. And also that extended learning opportunities and the work you're doing is going to be featured at the upcoming Council of Great City Schools meeting as one of the panels. And that, so she's going to be sharing what she does with school districts from all over the country. So they're, you know, we do lead in this area, not only here in San Diego, but nationwide. And also wanted to share with regard to funding, and I know superintendent Jackson's been looking into this, but, you know, we're not really, we're not doing these programs in a vacuum because we are working with the San Diego Foundation and all these other amazing organizations, nonprofits. You know, and I know it might not look the same, but yes, we're going to be losing funding. But hopefully there's a way that we're creatively working with these other organizations to, you know, because they're all kind of in the same boat. Because they don't want to see these programs go away either and they all do fantastic work. So, you know, hoping and we'll be finding out, I'm sure, more about that, what's going on. But there's a lot of great organizations in San Diego that want to keep these programs, particularly for our priority one students. And so hopefully we'll be able to create a way to continue that work.
Yeah, that's just President Bosso's point. I think the mayor and the city council are preparing to go to the voters next year for a sales tax increase. And it is entirely as much the responsibility of the city as it is the school district. And we're happy to share in that responsibility, but we'd like a partner in funding summer programs for young people.
Okay, good, good to know. You heard it, you heard it here. I just had a quick question about, you did mention that the level up enrichment went down from 22 to 23. I'm not sure if I missed why that was. Was that because of funding or was that just because?
No, we offered, it was limited. The previous year, you could sign up for one. What the intent of the ELOP, we had to shift the way we offered it. They can enroll in multiple programs. So these, these priority students actually had more opportunity. So these, these priority students actually had more opportunity, but it did limit it. So that was feedback that we received. We're going to limit it to two next year and partnering with the foundation, we're hoping to continue that partnership, but limiting it to two, but offering a way for families to provide, to have seven to nine weeks of coverage. So yes, it did go down, but that was an increase in actual contact hours, which is seat hours because they were nine-hour-a-day programs.
I see. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Trustee Whitehurst Payne?
I want to comment on what Richard said about the city and also the county. I am really lobbying and the Lincoln Cluster has decided to really take it on. We are going to be presenting to the city council on a regular basis about our schools, what's going on, the fact that we're here and what the programs are, what we're asking them to do. I was glad to see Morni here today. And they just need to know who we are and what we're trying to do. And if they have revenue, if they're going out, then we need to tag along because a lot of the, people don't know, they give the accolades to San Diego Foundation, which is great, but the money came from the district. It came from government monies. So everything, I mean, everybody benefits. The private nonprofits are benefiting, our students are benefiting, society is benefiting. So we all need to come together. I don't care what pot it's coming from, whether it's the city pot or the county pot, the state or the federal, or even for that matter, private. Let's all work together to help our students to be the best that they can be.
Absolutely. Superintendent Jackson?
Thank you. Just because we moved away from the presentation, I have met with the mayor. We have his commitment to supporting our programs. I've also met with Mark Stewart, San Diego Foundation. They are committed as well. So I know we're asking lots of questions, but this was about the presentation. But I can, I can speak to that directly and the work that I've been able to do with the mayor and with Mark Stewart. And we've been in touch with Nora Vargas from the county as well. And I believe we're going to have a way forward.
All right, thank you. And I think those were important questions that needed to be addressed, whether, not they were specifically part of the presentation or not, but as you said, elephant in the room, you know, is always funding. So thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
All right, we will now conduct a public hearing and consider items E2, item E2, certification of sufficient standards aligned textbooks and/or instructional materials for the 23-24 school year. There's no staff presentation on this item. Do we have a motion to approve E2? Motion by trustee Hazen, second by trustee Pedersen. Any comments or questions? Nope. Okay. Oh, the hearing is now open. Sorry. Did we have any speakers on this one? Okay, sorry. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Do any trustees have questions or wish to discuss the item? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Trustee Cattorianno?
Aye.
Thank you. And all others? All right, motion passes unanimously with the student board member concurring. Moving on, we will now consider agenda item F, agenda items F1 through F5, which is the adoption of minutes recognition of October 4th, 2023 as walk, bike, enroll to school day and clean air day. Recognition of October 9th, 2023 as Indigenous Peoples' Day and recognition of the month of October as Filipino American History Month and National Bullying Prevention Month. Do we have a motion on items F1 through F5? Trustee Hazen, do we have a second over here? Second by trustee Barrera. And sorry, my, my screen got logged out. No speakers. Okay, thank you. Okay, do trustees have questions or wish to discuss the items? Or, yes, trustee Hazen?
Thank you. I did want to just speak briefly on F2, which is recognizing October 4th as walk, bike and roll to school day and clean air day. I think this is really important as we think about our goals to reduce vehicle emissions and achieve our climate change goals. This is really important. One of the things, a few things I'd like to highlight from the resolution are, A, that air pollutants are especially harmful to children and their respiratory systems are still developing. And something, and I think we've mentioned it previously, but that transportation accounts for 26% of overall greenhouse gas emissions and passenger cars are responsible for the majority, more than 60% of those emissions. And something that was really striking to me, but really speaks to the individual difference each student and family can make by walking or biking to school, is that if a family walks to school twice a week rather than driving, they can reduce their carbon emissions by 131 pounds each year, which is really significant. So I do want to voice my support for this resolution, but really encourage our children and families who attend neighborhood schools to consider walking or biking to school.
Thank you, trustee Hazen. Trustee Pedersen?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to agree with my colleague and expand slightly. Not only broadly speaking 26%, but our district from our 2017 inventory that was done by Epic, two-thirds of our emissions is produced by student and staff transportation. So it's a, it's, in a certain sense, it's the elephant in the room in terms of our GHG emissions. And we were, I was asked in one of these interviews by reporters who wanted to report on our net zero commitment, does that include transportation? That includes the transportation that's within our purview. But here's where I'd like to just reiterate what was said in the previous item about the city of San Diego and other agencies. I would, a lot of us would love to avail ourselves of walking and biking for our children and if we're staff, for staff. But we need our partners in the city and at Sandag to join us in that effort because a lot of us feel like the infrastructure, we don't feel it, the infrastructure is inadequate to do, to do that kind of activity in a lot of places safely. So we need support. I'm glad to hear there's some revenue coming for the city of San Diego for infrastructure, but this is a major, getting our students and staff out of their vehicles and onto bikes and walking is not just a health priority, but it is a GHG and a pollutant priority as well. So I appreciate you bringing this to the board.
Thank you. Trustee Pedersen? Anyone else? All right, we already did our motion. Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start with trustee Cattorianno?
Aye.
And all other board members? Okay, those items pass unanimously with the board members concurring. And let's see, if I am on the right one. We're on G1, I believe. All right, okay. We will now report publicly on the superintendent's 22-23 evaluation and consider amending the superintendent's employment contract to extend it by one year. Okay, so I'm going to read this report, so bear with me. We've condensed it for reading aloud purposes, but it's, you know, it's somewhat lengthy. It's not too bad. The board recently conducted a summative evaluation of the superintendent for the 22-23 school year. The board superintendent inherited a framework for evaluation that while aligned with our shared values and vision, we believe can be substantially improved. Oh, and by the way, I'd like to thank trustee Pedersen at the top of this for helping us to, to put this in a more narrative form that's a little easier to understand and makes more sense. We have begun working with the Council of Great City Schools to develop clear, measurable, long-term and interim student-centered goals to clarify expectations about future evaluations. The 2022-23 evaluation focused on five goals and it's based on rubric ratings. And there's a full report, if you want more information on this, online at Board Docs. So there were four different rankings. It's, was, went from either beginning, developing, accomplishing, to extending were the different rankings. So for the first goal, which was universal transitional kindergarten, the board rated the superintendent as beginning on developing literacy skills and reading behaviors for UTK educators and developing and creating partnerships with universities to create workforce pipelines for UTK educators and expanding UTK dual-language classrooms. Our second goal was wellness, health and safety. And the board has rated the superintendent as accomplishing on expanding access to mental health services and also on increasing the number of students that we've served and beginning on determining the wellbeing of staff in order to provide targeted support. Our third goal of the five was extended learning. And the board rated the superintendent as developing and increasing reading levels of students in grades UTK through eight who participated in the summer academic monitoring program, as you just heard about, and accomplishing and increasing math scores of students in grades three through eight who participated in the summer academic morning program. Increasing A through G completion and increasing access to enrichment programs for tier three students. Our fourth goal was standards-based learning, teaching and grading. And the board rated the superintendent as developing and expansion of the literacy acceleration program and beginning in educational partner engagement and development of a system-wide strategy on modernizing mathematical instruction. Finally, our last goal was staffing and development. And the board rated superintendent as accomplishing, accomplishing and increasing substitute supports for schools with historically low fill rates and extending and developing higher to retire pathways. The board also recognizes and applauds superintendent Jackson for the following work over the last year, creating and implementing a concentric circle model, an operating framework that puts students and their families at the center of our collective mission to ensure equity and belonging to create conditions that all, ensure all students thrive. Second, in creating two divisions, equity and belonging in the Office of Meaningful Graduation. Next, on focusing on district-wide leadership professional development, increasing student voice in district-wide decision-making, which includes the addition of a second student board member who represents Title I school. We're getting close there. Hang in, hang in there with me. Implementing the UTK, implementing UTK, serving nearly 4,200 students at 118 elementary sites across the district. Decreasing the rate of chronic absenteeism by seven and a half percentage points from the 21-22 school year. Fully implementing ethnic studies as a graduation requirement. Increasing employment salaries to historic levels. Decreasing the number of long-term English language learners. Receiving the highest opinion from independent financial and performance auditors regarding the use of current bond measures to improve facilities. This includes the passage of Measure U. Some areas that we'd like to see continued improvement include UTK, implementation of a multi-tiered system of support, increased math and reading achievement, slowing declines in enrollment and decreasing chronic absenteeism. And ensuring our classrooms and campuses are safe, welcoming and caring environment for all of our students. Beginning with the 23-24 school year, the board and the superintendent are working together to implement a student outcomes-focused governance model that includes establishing measurable three-to-five-year goals. We are confident that superintendent Dr. Lamont Jackson remains the leader most qualified to lead San Diego Unified on a daily basis and guide our district through the challenges and opportunities that lie ahead. His deep experience in this district make him the ideal person to navigate the realignment of our priorities and post-pandemic budget challenges, as you've heard mentioned this evening, we face as a district. He has earned and retains the respect and confidence of the San Diego Unified community and is widely revered by his staff for his leadership. In recognition of our satisfaction with Dr. Jackson's leadership, we have offered to extend his employment contract to June 30th, 2027. Finally, this board is confident that our values are aligned, our vision is shared and our mutual responsibilities are clear. Thank you. And that was a short version, so go online if you'd like to read more. Yes. All right. Moving on, okay, so we have to vote on this.
And a second.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion in a second.
Yes, thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve extension of the superintendent's employment contract. Okay, motion from trustee Barrera, second by trustee Hazen. And do we have any, sorry, I'm not keeping up with my speakers. I don't think we have any speakers on this item. Do trustees have questions or wish to discuss the item? Anyone? Yes, trustee Barrera.
Just very quickly, the, the extension is the maximum extension that we can provide. And so, yeah.
Yeah, it was initially to 2026, so it's now been extended to 2027.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote. We'll start with trustee Cattorianno. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
Oh, I was just going to, well, we've said enough, but, but I just want to say for the, for the public who may not quite understand the relationship between a board and a superintendent, this is really our only employee, our direct, this is our direct report. And so to a certain extent, this is the, this, both hiring for the previous board that hired him and then retaining is, is the primary function of a board to a certain extent. And so this is a very difficult decision and I think as reflected in that report, we sort of struggled with, with some of the criteria that were established by the previous instantiation of this board. And I, I just reiterate that we're very excited, I think, to be working with Council of the Great City Schools. I mean, it's, that's right. And, and to, to, to fine tune that because as a board, and you'll see this all over the state, all over the country, it's a complex thing. A board, the function of a board is to ensure that the district, the governance, that the administration of the district is aligned with the values and interests of the community. That's what we do. A lot of, a lot of countries have just administrative school districts and they do not have this board function. So for us, we weren't necessarily fully comfortable with the current criteria, but what I will say about the superintendent, there is a risk in some districts where a superintendent can essentially gain more or less control over a board and be making decisions the board is just, there's other districts where the board is sort of running roughshod over the superintendent and usurping that, that superintendent's role. So what I would just say, my confidence in Lamont, more than any, or superintendent Jackson, sorry for the familiarity, is that this board has established an appropriate, the appropriate relationship with the superintendent where we understand his role as administrator of the school district. It is not our role to dive down on the school sites and demand this or that. We trust this administrator to listen to us and govern this district in alignment with our values. So I would just say, we're excited, I think we're excited about moving forward in the future to have more concrete criteria to judge the superintendent's performance, but in, in, in the absence of that, we are very confident that his leadership is, is the appropriate leadership of this district at this time, so.
Excellent summary. Thank you. Okay, I think trustee Cattorianno, do you want to go ahead and vote?
Aye.
All right. Everyone else? All right, that motion passes unanimously with student board member concurring. Moving on to, yes. We will now consider item H1, granting of easement and right-of-way to AT&amp;T California at Toller Elementary. Do we have a motion on item H1? Trustee Whitehurst Payne has made a motion. Do we have a second? Someone? Okay, trustee Pedersen, second. All right, oh, no speakers. Do you guys have any questions, comments? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Trustee Cattorianno?
Aye.
Okay, everyone else? Okay, that passes unanimously with student board member concurring. All right, we are up to superintendent's consent agenda. So we will consider items I1 through I40, the superintendent's consent agenda with the following items that were previously withdrawn by staff. They include I8, I20, I21, I23, I35 and I38. Is there a motion on items I1 through I40? Motion, motion by trustee Hazen. Do we have a second? Okay, trustee by, I mean, motion by, second by trustee Barrera. And I believe we have a speaker on I13 and then another speaker on I15. Pam? And then followed by Heather Russell. You each have three minutes, please.
Three minutes. I'm on, speaking on item 13, the five-star student solutions, the data collection on students. Per the agenda item document, it said to track activities, events, behaviors and interventions using the web-based platform, mobile and barcode scanning technologies. School site staff can check in students for activities, events, interventions and track their positive behavior occurrences using a mobile barcode scanner, a mobile device or a computer. Now, in the 19-page district contract with the provider, it says parental consent is not applicable. So that's a little disconcerting. A couple other items in that contract, it says, no identification for students of their parent guardians by persons other than the provider and required persons performing activities mandated by the California Department of Education is permitted. Does this mean the Department of Education is overseeing this or they put this in place? Will this information go to them and not stay in the district? And also, no access to individual student And also, no access to individual student data will be granted by the provider, which is, you know, the Five Star Student Solutions, to any other person or entities without written consent of the pupil's parent. But the parent didn't have to give consent for this service to be used. They don't have a knowledge of this service perhaps being used, but now they have to sign permission if the provider's going to disclose this information elsewhere. No written permission is needed for the parent if the information for sharing with persons within the district or representative of the provider, so no written parent consent for that, so long as those persons have a legitimate interest in the information. Who are those people? Who decides legitimacy? What are the ages for the use of this? Is this mandatory for all students, what, K through 12? Some kids don't have a phone? Is this only computerized? Is this all schools? What's the date of implementation of this? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We next have Heather Russell had three minutes.
Excuse me, I tried to sign up.
Yeah, you're next after Heather, yeah. This was on I15, and you have three minutes.
My name is Heather Russell, and the district owes $3,898.97 that they failed to reimburse per our settlement agreement. If you are a parent of a child in special education, just starting your journey with your child at San Diego Unified, just know this. I wish your child a happy, positive, educational, social, and emotional journey, but know that San Diego Unified will be there every step of the way to cut services, to make life harder, to make excuses, and to demean and devalue you as parents. So be prepared. Don't trust them. The moment you do, they'll use it against your child. So, to all the parents who have children with special needs or who are medically fragile, who are starting their experience with San Diego Unified, prepare. Prepare for them to bully and intimidate you. Prepare for harassment and discrimination. Prepare for your child's IEP to be violated. Prepare to hire lawyers and go to due process. Prepare for them to breach a settlement agreement and not reimburse funds. Prepare for them to set office hours and then refuse to meet with you. Prepare for them to have no interest in resolving or mediating, because it isn't a matter of if San Diego Unified will fail your child, it's when. It isn't a matter of if Mr. Jackson and this board will fail your child, it's when. This has been going on for quite a long time. There's been zero interest by you, Mr. Jackson, or this board to do the right thing, to follow the settlement agreement, to help a child who's medically fragile with special needs. I know you like your applause, but that means doing the right thing for every student. And if they have special needs, if they are medically fragile, if they've had 23 surgeries, five heart surgeries, and a heart attack, like my son, they still have value, and they still deserve, you shake your head, but you will refuse phone calls and refuse emails. They deserve the same as every other student. It's shameful what you're doing.
Okay, next we have Miles Timpson on item I25, three minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. Sharon, Richard, Sabrina, Shayna, and Cody. Miles Timpson, math teacher, wanted to speak in support of item I25 on Lamont's consent agenda. First, I do need to mention the group project I assigned wasn't turned in. Check Power School, the score's a zero. That said, I do want to say I'm really glad to see personal finance on the agenda tonight. This particular item, personal finance in schools is a very important topic. This item involves accepting a grant to hire a personal finance coordinator, which I think is perfectly fine and well, and I hope that results in some progress on this issue. I'm concerned that this grant alone won't have the impact this issue requires. On the record earlier this year, saying that I think to make progress on this issue, we need to prioritize personal finance in our math courses. All of our students take seven years of math. Realistically, we can have a big impact prioritizing math and prioritizing personal finance in math. There's a lot of issues involved in lack of personal finance education, credit card debts at an all-time high, student loan debts even higher than that. There are way too many homeless people. We need to do something. I think that we can, short-term, put personal finance topics in the existing standards where they make sense, have personal finance lessons at the end of the year after testing. Longer-term, we might need to go to Sacramento and get the math standards changed, take out the useless topics, and put personal finance in instead. I think we need to make math more useful for students and prepare our students for the financial realities of the world. Lamont, I want to thank you for including this item in your agenda, and I support the issue, so I support the item, and I hope this issue is further addressed in our math courses. Thank you for your time.
Okay, do trustees have questions or wish to discuss items I1 through I40? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Trustee Catturiano?
Aye.
Okay, all others? Okay, that motion passes unanimously with Student Board Member concurring. We are now moving on to our public testimony on non-agenda items, and, let's see, we have several requests. I'm going to start with Dan Smikowski. If Dan can make his way up, you'll have two minutes, and then if others have signed up, if you can just kind of be towards the front of the podium, and I'll go ahead after Dan, I'll list the rest of the people. Go ahead.
Thank you. Before I begin, the young man who's a dead ringer for Bruce Lee, can you imagine that? Look at that fellow. Martial arts, unbelievable. Let me begin by recounting a story of Dr. Joe Klett of La Jolla, my friend of over 40 years. Very emotional, and it touched me deeply, and I'm going to ask Dr. Patterson for help, and I'm going to ask for all of you to help me. Well over 50 years ago, Dr. Klett of La Jolla was a walk-on to the track team. I'm a former Iron Man, and I know what it takes, I know what it takes to be on a track team, but he was a walk-on. Therein lies the issue, that is the issue, walk-on. Rules are made to be broken. Rules are always broken. We know this. We're aware of it. We're big people. We're not little people, we're big people. So, we know there are complications. La Jolla High School, in 1965, won CIF title in track. According to Dr. Klett, and the story he told me, and it brought me to tears, he recounted every minute, La Jolla High School would not have won that title without Dr. Klett, and Dr. Klett was denied a letter in track, and I'm here to correct that. One year later, Dr. Klett was blinded for life in a horrific car accident on Mount Solidad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have several speakers coming up to talk about the Language Academy. I'm just going to read off the names, and then you'll each have two minutes each. We have Stephen Vazel, Hudson Mays, Allison Mills, Brandy Bravo, Catherine Tabal, Elena Escobedo, Olivia Resch, Diamond Brandon, Sarah Quincy, Laden Barnia, Lindsay Rodriguez, Jessica Manning, and Laura Woodward, and the last person is Andrew Bailey, but he did not have a topic listed. So, if you can all just kind of line up, and you'll each have two minutes.
Good evening. My name is Steve Vassal. I would like to thank the board and Dr. Jackson for giving me this opportunity tonight to explain why I think it would be a short-sighted mistake to eliminate teachers from the Language Academy. Before I do so, I'd like to let you know I have a petition in my hands, signed by over 400 parents and some former parents and former students opposing the elimination of these teachers. Now, overall, the enrollment at Language Academy is high. Yes, we have low numbers in the second and third grade, but keep in mind, my, oh, I should say, I have a third grader in the French immersion program. I hope to be able to send my twins there to kindergarten next year. My third grader went, did kindergarten on Zoom in a language she didn't know. It was very difficult, and I think that that has had an effect on the lower numbers we have now, and in fact, we have increased our numbers since June. In June, we had 973 total students, now we have 981. In kindergarten through third grade, we had 490 in June. We now have 497. And our school enrollment is very large, as shown by those numbers. We are a very big school, and I think the board and the school district should look at eliminating teachers from the English-speaking schools, and that gets me to my final and most important point, in that we have very specialized teachers at this school who are very difficult to obtain and retain. And let me explain, like, yes, thank you, it's true that 25% of, because we have a dual-language Spanish program, 25% of the students know Spanish, but 75% of the students do not know these languages as they begin, and our teachers are not teaching these languages as a second language. They are teaching the normal elementary school curriculum in French and in Spanish. This is incredibly difficult, and it will be, it will harm the school if you take these students, these teachers away, and I think it might fatally harm the school, because we won't be able to get the teachers we so desperately need. And so, I just urge you, please do not take away our teachers.
We have Hudson Mays.
Bonsoir, Madame and Monsieur. My name is Hudson Mays. I'm a fourth grader at the Language Academy. My French education started in preschool at La Petite École. My mom and dad moved me to the Language Academy in kindergarten because they heard the teachers were amazing. COVID shut us down in my kindergarten years, so it wasn't until second grade that I finally got a full year of French immersion. I have ADHD, so learning everything online in a foreign language was extremely difficult. I have had to work extra hard to be considered at grade level in my target language. This has only been possible because of the specialized teachers at the Language Academy. Many of my friends in both Spanish and French are still feeling the effects of being online for a year and a half. Being able to have more time in smaller classes is important for their success. Without these specialized teachers, my friends and I will struggle. These are not teachers you can find at any other school in the district. Taking teachers away that can speak French or English, or French or Spanish, makes no sense to me. S'il vous plaît, je veux apprendre le français. Merci pour votre attention.
Thank you. Next is Allison Mills.
That's a tough act to follow. But I'm going to do my best to follow that, and mine will be in English, because I don't speak French. My name is Allison Abel Mills. I'm the parent of a kindergarten at the Language Academy. I'm also an associate dean at San Diego State University, Associate Dean for Academic Affairs. So, I want to say that I, say that to tell you that I uniquely understand the challenges of balancing enrollment, student success, faculty support, and working within the confines of a state budget that's decreasing. So, this is something I am conceptually familiar with, it's how I spend my days. I also know the importance of equity, and equity is something that the San Diego State, that San Diego Unified School District has all over the place. It's something that was brought up when you talked about why you wanted to keep your superintendent on today. And we all know that equity means that people don't all start from the same place, and that we must adjust to imbalances. But what I see in this issue is a one-size-fits-all formula being applied to situations where it does not exist. The Language Academy is a Title I school. It's one of nine dual-language immersion programs in San Diego Unified School District. It is the only French immersion program in San Diego Unified District. It's not the same as the rest of the schools. Therefore, it does not receive, should not receive the same treatment and the same formula being applied to calculate enrollment. The Language Academy cannot enter new kids after age, after second grade if they don't speak the language. That is not the same as other schools. The same practices, the same formula should not be applied to San Diego, to the Language Academy that are applied to the other schools in the school district. This is not an equitable situation. Instead, you must adjust. You must adjust the formula, you must understand that you're not working in the same place. My other friends will speak to you about the teachers, but I also want to point out that the training and recruitment of representative teachers is also one of the visions of San Diego Unified School District in 2030. You're going to lose speech teachers who are specially trained in working with young kids, who have a variety of needs in a second language, and you're going to put them in a place where they don't have to use that training, and that goes against your value systems that you have laid out in your plans. And that's it.
Thank you. We have Brandy Bravo.
My name is Brandy Bravo. I am a first-time Language Academy parent and a special education administrator for a non-San Diego Unified school, for a virtual charter school who specializes in serving at-risk youth. My daughter Mia is enrolled in Ms. Furtin's French kindergarten program. My husband and I are both incredibly pleased with Language Academy's mission, and we can't stop singing Madame Furtin's praises for how wonderful she is. We're very grateful for her experiences and expertise that she brings to our community. She's thoughtful, kind, communicative, and loving with our students, and we have no doubt that she represents the culture of Language Academy as a whole. As a special ed administrator, I deal firsthand with staffing and know how important it is to retain skilled teachers to improve student outcomes. I'm, I also know firsthand how difficult it is in today's climate to identify and retain skilled and specialized teachers. I know firsthand how major classroom changes such as these in the middle of the year impact teacher morale, as well as the detrimental ripple effects that low staff morale has on the overall staff climate. We cannot afford to compromise the sense of teacher morale at Language Academy in light of today's teaching shortage for fear of the ripple effects and long-term consequences on our staff and learners. Teacher disruptions and reassignments impact children's sense of belonging to their learning community as well as their academic progress. Teachers have been working tirelessly during the 23-24 school year thus far to establish relationships with students and their families, to develop lessons, class culture, and monitor progress in student data. We have asked teachers to triage and pivot tirelessly in the years following COVID, and we owe it to them and our students to honor their skills and specialty that they bring to our unique and sacred community. While I understand the need for reassignments based on district need, I come today asking that you reconsider redesignating any of, any of Language Academy's highly qualified and specialized staff for a fear of the impact that, for a fear of the impact that doing so will have on our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Catherine Tabal.
Hi, good evening. So, my name is Catherine Tabal. My son started a kindergarten program at Language Academy in French immersion. Thank you for the opportunity today to speak. We want to talk to you, as you know, about the access process, and especially about the timing of the process. Why does this have to happen while school has already started? As you know, with our school, our latest recruitment are kinder teachers, so our kindergartners are just barely getting over the stress and anxiety of starting in school in a language they don't know, and we're going to rock their world around again and disrupt learning just for a spreadsheet. We just want to understand, why can this not happen in the summer before the school starts with limited disruptions to school? There are many studies that show that interruptions and disruptions in the- There are many studies that show that interruptions and disruptions in the school, especially in the early school years, can have lasting impacts on children's ability to learn and thrive all the way through grade 12. So we, we want to ask you to please reconsider this process. Also, as my fellow parents have mentioned, it does not make sense to take a native-speaking French teacher and reassign them to an English program school. It's a waste of potential and unique skill. So we want to respectfully ask you tonight to please do not look at a COVID anomaly, to make lasting decisions on our school, very specific programs and needs, and to reconsider this process and try to look at ways to not impact the school year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Elena Escobeda.
So thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Language Academy. The rollout of this initiative has caused a lot of confusion and anxiety, you know, among teachers, school administrators, parents, and most of all, our children, who have developed bonds with their teachers already. My ask would be that you hold off on this initiative for the academic year so we have time to collect data, really understand the impact that it will have to the Language Academy. As we all know, and it's already been spoken about by the folks before me, you know, this has the potential to have a very lasting impact. And, you know, you know, just please consider this request, you know, to look at the unique requirements of the Language Academy that have already been outlined here tonight. And it will impact all of our babies, you know, now and into the future.
Olivia Resch.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Resch. I have two children enrolled in the wonderful academically rigorous French immersion program at the Language Academy Magnet School. They are in third grade, the grade most affected by COVID, having kindergarten on Zoom, and also another one in kindergarten. I think it's clear from what you've heard tonight that our Language Academy families are loud and proud. I've heard much discussion tonight about opportunities, academics, and the social, emotional state of our students. Your current allocation model can and will negatively affect many of our students across multiple grades. Leave our highly qualified specialized teachers where they belong, at our specialized Magnet School, the only one of its kind in San Diego. This potential excess of two or more full-time teachers will impact and disrupt four teen classrooms. Yes, I counted. You say that you want to limit teacher shifts and other disruptions to learning. Why not change and improve your allocation model now and leave our teachers at our school for this school year? Thank you.
Diamond Brandon.
Hello, everybody. Hey, Richard. Good evening. My name is Diamond Brandon. My daughter is Mia. She's a second grader at Language Academy in the French immersion program. And I've seen my daughter thrive at a, at Language Academy as a young black girl, an English speaker, and born to parents who never had opportunities in the public education system that this school offers. Part of what made my daughter's introduction to a completely new language easier was the rare opportunity to learn from a native-speaking teacher in kinder. The impending threat of accessing teachers from our school roster means students are robbed of that same opportunity that my daughter had to thrive under qualified native-speaking educators. It is, it also means that our youngest, most vulnerable age groups are negatively impacted by the potential of shifting classes or increasing class sizes. Although other schools are feeling the impact and effect of this same practice, our school is not the same as others. You have internationally recognized public school that celebrates diversity. It fosters an environment of inclusion and has little black boys and girls from my neighborhood speaking Spanish and French. That's unheard of. So making decisions about an immersion school with this one-size-fits-all policy or using an outdated method that somewhat ignores the long-term impacts of COVID and has had on enrollment and attendance isn't just unfair. It's another example of the school district not doing the hard work to address the many factors impeding student success and participation in their district as a whole. If this process made any sense, it would allow for decision-makers to look at individual schools that don't quite fit under the umbrella of traditional public schools and make provisions for them to exist, to thrive, and keep cultivating an environment that pours into young minds with the best, the qualified, and the passionate. If you look at your own data, it shows you what we're talking about. Thank you for your time.
Sarah Quincy.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Sarah. It's my understanding that there is a small number of schools currently in need of more teachers. And there is a large number of teachers who are in risk of being accessed. I am here to urge the board, urge you, to keep our specialized Language Academy teachers at our school because they are specialized. My oldest daughter is in second grade at the French program at the Language Academy. She developed so much self-confidence when she had in kindergarten the same, one of the teachers who is at risk of being moved. My youngest daughter is currently in kindergarten with one of the teachers who is very high-qualified and who is at risk of being accessed. We cannot afford to lose the teachers. Reason one, we need all of our teachers in Spanish and in French because this is the only French immersion program in our district. Why squander French and Spanish expertise? Why transfer them when you could transfer English-speaking teachers to an English-needing school? Reason two, we need all of our teachers in order to grow the Language Academy French program. If they stay, then our program will grow and attract more students. If they leave, future teachers who are specialized in languages will be afraid to apply and afraid to find their same situation in the end of October, being accessed and being told they have to leave that particular school. Number two, if one, number two. Reason number two, our specialized, we need to keep our specialized language teachers because keeping them is best for the well-being of our children. Thank you.
We have Leiden Akbarnea.
My name's Not Laden. Good afternoon, Dr. Jackson and the board. My name is Luca Osiac-Barnia, and I am a fourth grader in the French program at, at the Language Academy. My sister Mila is a second grader there. French is my native language. My mom chose the school for us because she wanted us to understand that we live in a world with many people, languages, and cultures. She wanted us to feel comfortable and proud about our Iranian heritage and speaking person. And being in an immersion school with French and Spanish reminds us how important and useful it is to learn other languages. Now that my brain and my, and the rest of my generation is in the right mindset after COVID, now we may lose teachers. We are not an English-only school, which makes our lot, no, wait, that's a. With our needs for dual immersion, how can we lose even one teacher for either language? It shouldn't be acceptable at this extraordinary school, which makes our lives easier. Please don't identify us as the same English-only schools. Consider our unique needs. You may think you are balancing across schools, but look at me. Look at my friends. Look at your school and students like my sister, who may lose the chance to study with one of my favorite teachers next year. Pensez de nous et de notre école. Thank you.
Lindsay Rodriguez.
Good evening, board. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. So my name is Lindsay. I have two kids at Language Academy. I have a third grader and a kindergartner in the French program. As my, my understanding is that my kindergartner's French teacher is at risk. My kindergartner every day is like, oh, I don't want to go. You know, I'm getting him in the swing of things. And, but he loves his teacher. He loves his teacher. And so if she is accessed, that will be so detrimental. So all of my fellow teachers and these awesome kids have said basically everything in my head, so I want to take it kind of a different direction. You know, when I heard about the, the Third Friday Shuffle, I was like, is that like a dance move? What is that? And when I found out what it was, I honestly couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it was a policy. I couldn't believe it was a process. Because why would we take a month in, everyone's just getting used to everything, now I am being redundant, and you're going to go switch it up? It doesn't make any sense. And if your process is, you forecast in the spring, schools get it wrong. Once you put a forecast out there, you know it's wrong immediately, the minute you publish it. Taking and switching up things, especially with specialty schools, it just doesn't make sense, you guys. It causes so much stress on the teachers, on the parents, on the staff. COVID data, post-COVID shows that, you know, enrollment overall is down 3% to 5%. And those parents that chose alternative means of school like it, and they're probably going to say it that way. So I would actually ask you all, what can we change to make sure that we're still getting students coming into San Diego Unified? And how are you going to help us resource marketing our schools to get more students into specialty schools, right? And the other thing is, can't we go big? My understanding is that we fund based on attendance. That's manufactured problems. If we funded based on enrollment, we could go a completely different route.
Okay, thank you. We have Jessica Manning.
Hi. Hello. I'm Jessica Manning, and I have two students at the Language Academy. One's in kinder and one is in first grade, and they adore it. And I have never really been involved in anything in my whole life. And this right here is, this school is something special. I'm sure everyone says that, like their kid is the most special. This school is something special. These specialized teachers are needed. And there's always a solution to every problem. But this problem that is in front of you, based on past policies, based on what has been done before, I think, I don't know what the right terms would be, archaic, out of date, or not logical. And to just say, I agree with everyone else, is there should be something different going on at this school because we are a different school. And there is a strong, strong community of parents here. We walk together, we bike together, we talk on the way through drop-off. And there's something amazing coming out of this multilingual school that we have. And changes do need to happen, and that might be the long-term thing that we talk about. And hopefully, there will be a long-term change where this doesn't occur again in the future. But for this year, for right now, I really plead that we don't let go or shuffle around any of the teachers, that we keep them in place, keep them as are, and notice the, the power, the passion, the synergy behind me, and that we are all wanting to boost the school, increase enrollment, that now we all see a problem, that this school is getting stronger. COVID, sorry, is a thing of the past, and we're moving forward, and we're banding together, and we see issues, and we can improve upon them, so.
Thank you. And then finally, Andrew Bailey.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to appear before the board. And I was, you guys got the back of an envelope, so. So just wanted to point out that the board approved our program, and I think the board has an obligation to support our program too. That's why we elected you. That's why we elected you. So, you know, those teachers are the tool to do the job correctly. If we don't have the teachers, it's not going to work right. And again, let's go to the formula just for a second. I think the formula is arbitrary, and there's like lots of reasons to do it, and like a meeting like this is not a good time to talk about it. Yeah, it doesn't recognize atypical schools, I don't think, does it? I don't know. And so you guys approved this program, and then we've got this atypical program, and you're not supporting it because you've got an arbitrary formula. So I will keep it quick. I appreciate this opportunity to appear before the board. Maybe you can have us into closed session or something where we can really talk about it. And I think these folks, gosh, wow, parents, you know. My kids go to school with their kids. Woo. So I really appreciate having an opportunity to really work on this and other things, too. I think I'll go get a rotisserie chicken. Thank you.
Yeah, and sorry, we have one more speaker, Laura Woodward, if she's still here.
Hello. I'm the parent of Karen and Collins at the Language Academy. He's a first grader in Spanish, and his teacher was the last in, which means he would be the first out. So I'm wondering why we're putting it on a bunch of six-year-olds to make up for a district's poor planning? And then a third grader, a third-grade teacher would be moving down? And so then those nine-year-olds are losing their teacher and getting split? And I don't understand why nine-year-olds also have to pay for a district's inability to plan. We've talked about the money with the summer program, but the budget, to my understanding, is already for the teachers to be there. They're there right now, so I don't see why they have to leave. I'm also a district employee, and so for the last couple of years, there's a whole push on what is your why? Remember your why. Why are we in this? Why do we care about education? And I've heard a lot of moving stories, but if you're taking away teachers, those stories and the why do not match up. If you're taking away the teachers, your why is not fostering community. If you're taking away the teachers, your why is not quality education for all. If you're taking away the teachers, your why is not supporting our students' mental health. So if your why has anything to do with empathy and community and humanity, I ask that you keep the teachers at the Language Academy.
Thank you. And thank you all for providing your comments to the board and the superintendent today. We have provided this information to our superintendent to, to move forward on this, this issue, and we appreciate your input. And please know that your perspectives help us to better serve our students, parents, and the community. And this concludes the agendaized business. Our next regular meeting will be held on October 10th to 2023. This meeting is now adjourned.